Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting regular meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, November 28th, and the time is 6 o'clock. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And roll call, please.
Shalit Marie, out.
Here.
Dave Olson.
Here.
Letitia McIntyre.
Here.
Adam Calat.
Here.
Stephen Smith.
Here.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
And is there any announcements? All right. And is there a motion to waive the public reading and to approve the minutes from the November 14th, 2023 meeting as presented?
So move.
Okay, which one was the second then?
Oh, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, just to let you know, Dave proved him and I did, I did update. Thank you. So tonight, we have Jim, is it? Please, I apologize if I mess this up already.
That's it.
Leonard?
Yep.
All right. So we're gonna go over the 2023 comprehensive plan, so I'm gonna turn the meeting right over to Mr. Jim.
Appreciate it. Thank you. My best friend of 35 years, his father still calls me Jim Leonard. So I don't take offense to what anyone says. So thank you, appreciate your time this evening. I'm sure you read the comp plan cover to cover, fell asleep doing it, but I appreciate your work in reviewing it. So tonight I wanted to go over a couple of the highlights of the plan, next steps, what hopefully you guys would then do in the future, but also ask if there's any questions, any clarifying questions. Obviously, this is not a done deal by any stretch. Two members of the committee, Gary and Shelley are here. Obviously, I'd ask if you have any comments as well to ask those questions to them as well. So again, here we have the comp plan in front of you, the entirety of it. It's when we start, June 2022, so we've been at it for a while. So committing that monthly, there was a month or two we had to skip for personal reasons on my end, but we had a lot of robust discussions of at least usually two hours. I don't think we left any earlier than two hours. And we discussed different topics, transportation, land use, buffering, environmental, school stuff. So we went through the whole thing kind of as they are sectioned out in the plan. We issued a community survey. We issued about, almost 6,000 survey cards were mailed to property owners. Out of that, we received about almost 700 responses. I think it was like 685. So we did receive a good amount of responses, I feel, for the project, given the surveys were mailed over the winter. I do know a couple of snowbirds weren't able to get to it, but we did incorporate a lot of their comments when they returned from Florida. Two things that I think are different with this plan compared to other plans I've done or you may see is the nudging of the township to institute a form-based code, which you guys should be very in tune with because you would be the ones to help legislate that, create that as the next step in this process. Real quick, form-based code is not traditional zoning. It is more focused on how things are built, what they look like, how they're connected. So the reuse of property is much easier to do if and when. It's dead. Oh, no, it's not. Can you hear me now? Man, that was really loud. Yeah, so the basis of the form-based code is looking at the built environment compared to just density and land use and a permanent mixed use. So that is not for the entirety of the township, more for the old, old ethnic portion of the, of the plan and area. But I just want to point that out, that's something that St. Albans Township has adopted just in their core area of Alexandria and along 161. Madison Township's in the process of adopting a form-based code only for the corridor between Newark and Hanover on Long Road. So they're trying to densify specific areas within their community to help preserve the rural character and the rural farmland of everything else. So we're not having the sprawl effect of everybody gets development. So that's one thing that's different. Also, the implementation committee, you know, usually comp plans are revised every five years or so. I think that went out the window with Intel. So we put in a few pages of an implementation committee, which would be the purview of the trustees to do, to make sure that gets implemented, so this thing just doesn't sit on the shelf and collect dust and only be used as emergencies arise. So I think it's really important, you know, with you guys being in a high-growth area, many different facets of development facing you guys on a daily basis, having someone look at this document and tell and advise the, both you and the trustees, like, hey, this is something we're seeing, we need to address this. And then obviously the trustees would have to bless that. You kind of do a mini-plan review on a quarterly basis. It doesn't have to be monthly. But I think it's important to keep this thing fresh in everybody's mind as, as development continues, even without, without Intel, you know, you guys being a hotbed for activity. So that's also something that's in there. The future land use map, that's the sexy component of this whole thing. I tried to stress, and I think I made a good job, maybe Shelley, Marie, and Gary can tell me if I didn't, but not to get hooked up or so focused on densities. I know that's an important part of, of development. But if we focus on how they look, what amenities they have, density could probably take care of itself. And I know the schools are gonna be concerned, as, as you guys should be concerned. But I think focusing on density a lot with the future land use map, you, some, not you, people often miss other things that could be of benefit to the community that never get discussed because we're always, you know, we're always talking about four acres per acre, you know, four units per acre, or whatever it is. So that, I hope, is, comes through that density is an important part, probably the most important part. But there's other parts of the development that are also important with residential that should be taken into account when you're, when you're looking at developments. And with the future land use map, we created some, what we call development guidelines. So as you're looking at redoing your zoning, this is on page 68, starting on page 68, that you look at those guidelines as you're redoing your zoning or you're evaluating a development to come into the township. These are kind of the high, high-arching goals of those different districts. And then following those pages are a few typologies of what those districts would look like in terms of building placement, densities. Those pictures start on page 77. So, you know, it's, it's easy to say planned residential, but what does it look like? What's it feel like? What's it, you know, touch and feel? So, so that is also in there for consideration. The other thing I'll mention, each section has policies that are, and Brian was also involved in the making of this document. So you're on the hook too, Ryan?
Please.
Our, our policies. And so a lot of the, let's see, let me give up. Let's go page 102, land use policies. So these are things that, these are action items that the township should take to help implement the, the goals and objectives of this plan. So on page 102, you know, those are the land use policies. First one, you know, we, we recommended, the committee recommended that the form-based code or any ordinance update be adopted or initiated. So, you know, those, each, each section of the plan has those policies in which hopefully guide the decisions of both you, the administration, and the trustees. So that is, is in there as well. And then the, I think the bulk of the, of the document, you see in front of you is the survey results. So we, we have those in there, so they're always attached to the document. Anybody wants to look through them, they're there. And so that's kind of the document. I don't want to go over everything, but those are kind of the high-level pieces of, of the process and the plan. So I want to also apologize to Laura because I was confusing in my recommendations for adoption of this. So the hybridized code doesn't have a specific process to adopt a comprehensive plan. Thank you, legislature. So it's kind of up to each individual community to do as they please. Ultimately, it stops with the trustees with adoption, right? So two things, know that this is a policy and it's not a law. You know, I just want to always clarify that. Comprehensive plans are only policy. So it's a guideline. It's not the end of the world if you or the trustees go against the, the document, but there must be a pretty darn good reason. You know, because of the work that was done between the survey and the committee, it's supposed to be speaking for the people, right? So it is policy. With that being said, it's not law. So the adoption process, we typically recommend that townships follow the rezoning process. So anytime there's a rezoning, you guys have a public hearing, you take public comments, then you ship it up to the trustees. So Laura was asking me, and again, I apologize to Laura, when she was asking about public notice for this meeting, I said, no, because I would just want to get this document in front of you. It's, it's no, there's no need for public comment this period. However, if you so desire, I would recommend a public hearing by the zoning commission. And then you don't have to, but typically that's what we like to recommend folks do. Then you take those comments. If there's something that is egregious or we just missed the vote on something, we can talk about it. And then you make the recommendation to the trustees after you hear the public comments, whether that's in person or through a, we can put it on the, we can put it on the website with a link that people, if they have a comment, they can list the page number and their comment. And then I'll go through them and, you know, see if, how we should, if we should address them. Maybe we don't. You know, sometimes there are things that are good in theory, but just not possible. Or, you know, there's, there's things that happen that way. So, so ultimately, you guys would have your public hearing, and then the trustees, we would do the same thing. I would come to them, introduce what we've done up to this point, summary of the public comments that you would receive, and then your recommendation, then advise them, please, well, they would have to hold a public hearing. But, you know, they would have to at least hold one, maybe more. Madison Township held three at their planning commission level, and they're only doing one at their, or zoning commission, excuse me, and then one at their trustee level. So the trustees kind of put it in the zoning commissions lab and said, you guys get all the public comment and give us what you think is right, as, as appropriate. I mean, that's, that's the duty of, of you folks. So that's kind of the process. I'm happy to answer any questions of, of the information I gave you. If there's things that are obviously wrong or incorrect, we can address those too. But just here to answer any questions and, and make sure I state my appreciation for the work of the committee working the past 18 months, 16 months, dedicating some time and energy into this, and I do appreciate all of their hard work. So thank you, everybody. And I'll also say too, while I'm up here, there's things in here I don't agree with, and that's fine. You know, because this was a plan by the committee and by the community and by the survey. So I don't want you to think that's, obviously, we, my team wrote it. We got a lot to do with it, but I think it was a unanimous vote by the committee at the last meeting to, to push it to you, to you folks. And it's your plan, and I want everybody to understand that, you know, there wasn't just Jim's footprint all over this, or fingerprints. There's a lot of my fingerprints on there. But there are things in there that are unique to, and, and I like that. And I appreciate the opportunity to have some discourse with the committee and listen to what they say. I know what I'm losing, and I shut my mouth and go about my day. So it's, yeah, I appreciate that. That's all I have for tonight. I mean, like I said, I'm happy to answer questions. If you guys want to do the public hearing, however you guys want to proceed, I'm, I'm happy to follow suit.
Thank you very much for coming. We do appreciate you coming and
Oh, absolutely.
all the work that has gone through, the funeral, the mix of this and the trees that died for this purpose.
A few, yes.
Does anyone have any questions?
Oh, I have questions.
I knew you would.
I'm a little older than most, and I have trouble seeing some things. And so when, when you look at page 13 and you try to read the small white print on a blue background, it's not very good.
Correct.
And it happens throughout the document. Also throughout the document, the maps are too small.
Correct.
You can't, there's enough, not enough contrast in the legends between the, the legends and the maps themselves. I wish that there could be like a website link or something where you could go and pull these maps up and this information up.
Individually, okay.
So that it could, you know, be modified a little bit. There's, I read through the whole thing, and there's quite a few areas that I'm concerned about.
Correct.
If you look at page 17, for example, it's, it's a minor issue perhaps, but it says there that, you see the resident nationalities, they don't add up to the township residents. If you, if you add that up, it comes out to be about 31,000 that's listed when there's only 18-plus thousand as indicated there. Now, there's probably an explanation for that, and it could be explained out. And so, and I think it should be. I think it has to do with the number of white people versus the number of white and, and non-Hispanic. Those numbers kind of co-mingle. But the two of them together are more than what is currently shown there as, as the number of residents.
Sure. Yeah, it, it's a census data thing, so I'll, I'll dive into that.
I'd like to know a little bit more about the corridor plan that appears on page 25. Is that already a plan that's in existence?
Yes, sir.
Where can we find it? Is it referenced somewhere?
Yeah, the township commissioned that back in 20, when was that, 21? No.
I think it's on the website. I think it's on the website.
It is on the website.
Yeah.
I think it's under the comp plan.
I looked and didn't see it, so I'll.
I think it's under the current comp.
Okay. On page 27, it shows something in the graph called confidence limit. I'd love to know how that is determined. There's just little things throughout the whole document that is not clear to the, to the average person. And it would be nice to know a little bit about it.
100%. Because what I don't want is someone to start reading this and then get overwhelmed. I don't know these terms and shove it to the side. So
Exactly.
I appreciate your, your input.
Okay.
What was that again?
That was on page 27. And figure one and Mx9 are not readable in my point of view.
Okay.
You can use a magnifying glass and add help some, but it's not good enough.
Which page is?
27.
This is a document that's gonna be used to establish zoning and so on. It needs to be so that people can understand it and read it and set it up without having to go all over the world to figure out other details. And on page 28, the current zoning map that's shown there is not up to date. There's an annexation from, from Reynoldsburg that doesn't appear on the map.
Yeah, that's been a issue with, it's been an issue. I agree. It was current when we started this, so I'll have to, I have no problem taking a look, updating it, and then also formatting the document to make the maps larger.
You know, and I've, I've got all these things mapped out in my book, and I'd be glad to sit down with anybody. And, and, but on page 32, there's a whole bunch of acronyms in there that need definition. Some are, some are given, some are repeated. Just needs clarity, I think.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to sit down with you and go through it page by page. That's
Okay, I'd, I'd love to do that.
And then with whoever coming in, absolutely.
The, there's a broader term in there that I'd like some explanation on. It's the word "community." Community is used throughout the book. Does that mean "etna proper"? Does that mean the numerous subdivisions we have in the, in the township? Or just exactly what do you mean by "community"?
Yes, etna, etna is the community.
But, okay, etna proper, not the township.
Etna township, sorry. Etna township, yes.
Oh, etna township.
The, the community of etna township.
Okay.
And I can define that early on.
That isn't clear to me. I don't know about the others, but it isn't clear to me what you meant there.
Okay.
Just a couple of other little things.
Okay.
There's a circular graph on page 66 that shows agricultural land use up to 41% of the township. And yet, on page 20, there are zero people engaged in agricultural business.
Yes. So
It can't be.
Well, two, two different data sources. So the land use graph on 66 is from the Lincoln County Auditor, what the auditor assesses the property act. So those are the different classifications. And then on page 20, I'm assuming is census data. Correct.
But we know there are people who are farmers in the township.
Absolutely. So I, I, the census data is the best available data that I have to work with, and it's inaccurate. Like, if someone wants to tell me the census was done accurately this, this year, I'll go have a beer with you. But I don't know, to your point, sir, like, is it five? Is it 50? Is it 600? I just don't have an accurate data source to tell me what that number is. But I 100% agree with you. They're, they're, we have a farmer on our committee, at least one. So I don't know how to rectify the disparity of, of that.
Maybe just an explanation is the difference, or something like that, maybe. So like, like you said, the different sources.
Do you see here that you put like data source, use that US Census Bureau majority 2021, 2020 and 21? So that does help. I agree with him about the definitions. Like, we just went through a huge document. And some of the, you know, just for our regular zoning end. So to make it clear, we had a definitions section that would kind of help average common Joe who may not understand, like, example, community. Are they talking about the community of etna township, the majority, what's going on? And that would help clarify, because you're right, this is very involved, wordy, in a sense. And I know, I'm not saying it's wrong at all, but definitions would definitely help with reading through it. For someone who is not on this kind of board or on your, your board, maybe the little housewife that's down the road, and she wants to know about this, she would have a notebook.
Sure.
Unless she had a background in.
Correct. Yep.
Or house, you know, husband, whatever.
Absolutely. We'll, we'll scour for all the acronym soup that's spread throughout and then
I have another comment. If you go back to page 14 under survey results, the sentence begins with selected results are taken from the complete set of results. So I assume what's in the back is not complete, but they're selected. So I would like to know, why did you select the ones with the fanatics that appear in pages 150 and 188? And why did you keep the ones that show disrespect to certain people? And why keep open-ended responses like "non-applicable" and, and so on, that were repeated over and over again?
So I learned long ago that this was, this is a public process. And the last thing I want to be known for is modifying a public document. So I always err on the side of caution of leaving everything in there. Because it is, you know, if it was my, just Jim's project, then sure, I can manipulate and weed out and everything like that. I do this with all of my comp plans. I just, with the survey comes in, that's a public record. I don't want to be the one down as, well, you, you took out this and this, but you didn't take out that or that.
Okay, but the first, the sentence on page 14 says selected from the total.
Yeah, let me get to where you're at there. So selected results are taken from the complete set of results.
Selected results are taken from the complete set of results. So if, if they're complete, then say they're complete. And the words that are in there can be made like they are in newspapers and other places and magazines that you see with, with symbols instead of letters to spell out the profanity. There's some pretty strong words in there.
Okay. All right. What? I can do the, your, your thing and then put a note on the bottom saying, saying due to vulgarity, these comments have been modified or something.
But when people see the way that they're, well, first of all, you said this is gonna be on our website sometime. Everybody has access to the website, including young people. And I don't think that's appropriate for them, to see these words the way they're on there now. My opinion.
I agree. I can, I can work with that.
I have lots more, but I'll be glad to sit down with the committee or whoever, whatever, to talk.
Absolutely. I can, I can begin working on these. Okay.
Okay, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Do you want to have a
Jim, first of all, thank you and the committee, those that are here today, and those that are not. Is etna township that different, that unique? I'm just asking your opinion on that, in, in developing this plan. Are we? You're not a prototype out there. I understand that, but
No, I, did it take a little longer than I thought? Yeah. But you're also the public, you're the most populous, excuse me, most populous township? The most diverse in terms of development pressure? You mean, you got I-70, you got 310, you got City to the North that's doing things. So are you different in the process? No. Are you different? Yeah, absolutely. But nothing that I've never seen before, you know, so
Okay. I like to think we're unique, but, you know, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. You're unique. Especially, I mean, if you look at, I did Harrison's lot two years ago now. I don't know. You know, their, their whole process was different. They did five people, had a couple of public meetings, and called it a day, and served, you know. So you guys doing what you did, I think, was very open and transparent, and I appreciate that. You as a community are very unique in what you're, you're made of. Your location makes you unique. So there's, there's a lot of uniqueness here in the township.
I'd just like to see if you could clarify the form-based zoning that you talked about, because I'm new to this whole zone.
Yeah. Oh, man, about to rock your world.
Well, fair enough. I mean, I'm just getting used to the regular.
Yeah.
What, what, oh, first of all, can you give you a better explanation of what it is and why you think it's such a great idea, especially for etna proper?
Yeah, so it's basically for etna proper is, is trying to re, not recreate, extend the, the network of the fabric that you have in all that now. So I always equate it to like, you don't, you don't travel to Scotland or Europe or even South America to go look at suburbs, right? You go to look at their downtowns, their core, their history. So, my goal in, in recommending the transect code or the form-based code is to replicate that, what you have already in Etna proper or old Etna, to make sure it extends as far as it can in this plan, so you don't have car-centric development. So, you have a social network and a, and a fabric in which people get out and maybe have coffee on the, on the sidewalk, and there's bistros, or there's things that happen, or, or things that you would want to happen to facilitate a, a vibrant inner core, that you just don't really get with traditional zoning, in my opinion. I mean, you get the planned development, you get the planned residential, but a truly mixed use, as you would see, you know, centuries and centuries ago, where you didn't have just pockets of, of individual uses, you had this conglomeration of, of various uses. The form-based code lends itself to creating that fabric more than a traditional zoning, even a zoning res, uh, overlay, or zoning, uh, PMD, or something like that. So, the form-based code, and I, I'll send you, um, I'll send you, I'll send Laura the draft of St. Albans, and you can, it's, it's a lot easier to look at and to touch and feel. There's a lot of pictures, there's a lot of diagrams, there's a lot of, there's less text, um, because you're, you're aiming to create these buildings that are aesthetically appealing, that aren't focused on cars. It's focused on pedestrian first, cars second. So, parking in the rear, um, having buffers, uh, landscape buffers in between parking lots to, to kind of shade them away. So, that is kind of the goal of using the form-based code, other than traditional zoning, is to be able to look at a, a specific area and recreate that, I hesitate to use urban, but urban environment, where there's mixed use, there's revenue generation from property taxes for the township, and there's just more of that social interaction amongst people that communities love, right? You know, um, so. And when I started doing this two years ago, of, as a consultant, you know, that was one of the things I always presented to the committees. Two communities told me to walk away, that's not what they wanted to do. Okay, that's fine, you know, not a problem. Uh, but a, a couple of them, and, and again, we're not township-wide with this, it's only gonna be really specific. But I don't know if I answered your question, but.
You did, except, well, kinda. I have some follow-up, though, because it sounds like it's more of a, when you say form-based, it's like, this is the form we want these to, it looks like this. In other words, form versus function. So, my question then becomes, how would you enforce that? Because it sounds like it's very subjective. And if you want to enforce something, it's pretty hard to enforce something that's subjective.
Um, it, it's actually kind of reverse. It's very clear-cut, like, I wish I had a document. So, there's kind of like, well, there is, like, there's six different forms. It's a transect, so if you think of.
That's what Gary handed out on ten, twenty-two to all of these guys.
Thank you.
Ten, eleven, twenty-two, does anybody else need another copy?
Maybe.
Adam wasn't on the board then.
Gotcha. It's, um, oh, I wish I had it.
You want to use this?
I don't know when.
Adam, uh, Adam, Gary handed that out at an October eleventh, twenty-two meeting.
October eleventh last year.
What's that?
Yes, he, he, Gary attended a October eleventh, twenty-twenty-two meeting, and handed this out to the board about form-based versus traditional.
Yeah, so.
May I also, I mean, have it at home?
You will, when I, when I send you the document, you'll see, actually, I can probably just bring it up here. You'll see, there's a lot of pictures in there. So, those, there's pictures and those diagrams, so the pictures of the building tosads, the setbacks, which there's not a lot, because they're, they want the buildings pushed up to the front. Those, those are labeled, those are specified. I can go argue in John Singleton's office all day long about what's in your zoning text today, because it's up to interpretation. With a form-based code, if it says ten feet and two feet back, it's pretty hard to, to grumble about, to argue. So, I think having those pictures actually reduces some of the ambiguity within the zoning text. And then each portion of, of the old village will be sectioned into up to six different sections. And each section has a required tree lawn, it has a cre, required, um, build-to line. So, you're almost, um, you, you would have your most dense in the middle, and then as you, uh, recede from the, the middle, it slowly changes, it slowly gets a little bit less dense. So, you're almost traversing, the picture in here, I think, I think it's in here. You're traversing from the mountains to the ocean. And so, as you come down the mountain, and you get, um, different types of land, you get maybe some cities, farming villages, and then plains and farmland, and then the ocean. And that was a terrible representation of what I'm trying to explain. But what you get, what you get is this, even though each section is different, they all connect because they have the commonality of pedestrian connections and, and open space connections, and and you don't have these imaginary walls that say, okay, this is single-family, and now this is commercial. So, it kind of blends those lines together and keeps the form at the forefront of the conversations instead of the end. And I'll send Laura the, uh, the draft of the, um, St. Albans one. Hopefully, that, you can see what you're getting to.
More examples of, of what you're talking about.
Yeah.
It sounds, I'm starting to get it, but.
It's different. It, I haven't found it in my, in a township in Ohio, so it's relatively different. It's always set for, it's, it's used often for redevelopment, when it's too late. You know, not when it's too late, when something is already decayed, and they're like, okay, let's do this, let's do it right. The thought process in, in bringing this up to the, my clients is, let's just do it right the first time. You know, let's not let something be built that will fall into disrepair in twenty years for various reasons. Let's focus on building, in my opinion, correctly the first time, and so that is gonna stand the test of time over the years. That's kind of the impetus behind it.
So, mind if I, John, if you, you would have to enforce something like that, wouldn't you think?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's gonna just, uh, take a lot of the adapt, adaptation.
Yeah, absolutely, it would, it'd be part of the zoning ordinance, or resolution. But with any say, I think, over time, people will, will become used to it. Then again, the trustees could see this kind of plan and say, heck no, and that's fine, too. Or you could say, heck no, and not recommend it up to the trustees. But I'll, Laura, I'm gonna send you that.
Can I go ahead and read the definition for that for people listening or watching?
Sure.
So, form-based zoning focuses on building form as it relates to streetscape and adjacent uses, encourages mixed use, relies on design concepts and patterns intended to preserve the assets and character of a community.
Well, it's my poor, I'll clean it up if I fumble over.
Damn. It sounds like it would be, I mean, I, I get what you're saying, especially because we got the new mixed-use area going in, over here in three-ten.
And also, we may be too late for that, because I'm assuming it's approved, right?
It, it was approved a year ago, or more than a year.
Yes, longer than a year.
Yeah, we're, I think they're just waiting on, uh, water, water here, right?
Sure.
Thank you. Um, yeah, we approved that on the, yeah, it was two years ago, almost.
So, I, I also want to set expectations that, I mean, even if it is adopted in the form-based code, it hits your books in twenty twenty-four, it might not play a significant role, because it's already approved.
The beauty of that, though, is because of the mixed use, it has business residential, the way it was, I was here for that one, you were, he was.
I wasn't here for that.
You wasn't here for that?
No, I just came off right after the, right after you guys approved it.
That's right. But, um, it was a beautiful, um, presentation, I mean, of everything that's going into it, a lot of community, um, facilities and everything as well, so.
Good.
Yeah. It would fit with what we're trying to do in Etna, from what we saw.
Great.
I had a question, I did, but is this what you were talking about? The, the transect? Did you ever send that to Laura, and you can print off those two, couple pages?
Oh, that's up to you. Yeah. Yeah, it's, what I was trying to verbally state is on page ninety-seven.
Send it to Laura.
Yeah, it's, it's in the book, yeah. It's, they had it.
Okay, I send the book, this one?
Yes.
Eighty-seven?
Oh.
Eighty-seven. Ninety-seven.
I was, I was at ten behind.
This is ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven. I'm sorry.
They call, yeah, they.
Yeah, you're, you don't have a new one.
I don't have a new one?
It's the same one, but I changed the pages. She, Laura, she told me not to.
I mean, you said I didn't have one for her, and the only thing she was missing was the survey on the back.
It's mine.
I don't remember what you told me. You told me you didn't have enough copies, and that her copy would be good enough, and she was just missing the back section.
I, I saw the survey on the, where you gave us all links.
Um, now, just for the sake of paper, um, when this book would be published, and I'm, I'm all for putting all of the survey information in there, but I'm wondering, and this is just an idea, to save paper, can there be something put in here that says, if you would like to see the survey information, please go on to the Etna Township website and hit this certain link?
Absolutely, we can separate that.
Because, I, I mean, I'm glad we had it, I was glad to read through it, it's good to see what the opinion of everybody, my neighbors are. Um, I think I filled that out for my mom. Oops, um, but she didn't want to do it.
Just to let you know, from the other one, we hardly ever print together when it's all on the website by section.
That's what I thought before. So, there's always been a section on there, can we incorporate that instead of putting it in a printed copy?
Absolutely.
You know, because we're going so digital as a society, and I like his idea about having a link also to see these maps, exactly where they're coming from and everything, because, um, I'm a detailed person. I go on Google Earth, especially in these meetings, and I'll look up the location exactly the way it looks right now in real time. And so, it would be nice to have something like that, where they can see these maps that are in here more in detail, if they want to zoom in, if they want to see what's going on. The exact maps are fine.
We can get real nerdy, and I can create.
Real nerdy.
I can set, I'll have to work with you, Laura, or someone.
Maybe you should work with nerdy. I like that, I mean, I like to be informed as a, a citizen, that, that's me.
So, all the data that I used and created with these maps, I can export to Google Earth, and then it's, it'll be live on Google Earth. The, the thing I would caution you is that if something changes on a map, which probably would, at least for a year, maybe, then someone has to be responsible to go and change it on Google Maps.
I think you're, I think you're at a level that's really probably a board of trustees' decision how they want to do that, if writing.
I present that.
Nerdy. How nerdy we want to be.
I guess as you guys talk about it, it's, it's a couple more hours worth of work.
I mean, I do think a couple of those trustees are nerdy, but I don't want to speak for them.
Yeah, so that's something you can.
Yeah.
Bring up to it.
And, and like I said, we're becoming more of a society that is all online, hence, I think the majority of us have a tablet here tonight, so for, you know, that's okay. Um, I use my phone a lot of times when I'm looking things up.
Yeah, and to Mr. Olson's point, we'll, we'll, um, create a map for, uh, eight-half-by-one map of each one, and so those can be.
Yeah.
Displayed as well.
And I like the idea of being able to kind of break it down a little, where maybe it's a little more, um, with, I was gonna mention to his point, where he was saying how the, the wording is in here, it is a little, um, it's difficult to read in some of the graphs, because you're kind of having that glare of seeing the white behind the blue. If we reverse something and make it more of a chart, that may be some, that is something very, very small, though, that can just be changed, I'm sure. Different color, whatever may need.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask, uh, I have a graphic design consultant that I use, and she's gonna be.
I say that's not really a technical issue, that's just like a, um, beautifying kind of thing. Because the content was fine, it was just how it can be read.
Yep, I'll have them, uh, have her look at that, and then also, the, a deliverable will be two, at least two PDFs, one of the plan, one of the survey results, once they're edited.
That's, yes.
Yep, easy enough.
I saw his face when I said something about definitions, I understand why now.
Yep.
Because he did give this to us. Um, but to have that involved also, I think that strongly suggests, just for clarification for some people that may not understand the link-up.
Yep, absolutely. I agree.
Anything else from anyone?
I, you have a quick question about, so you suggested at least, well, we have to do a public hearing.
You don't have to.
Well, not, not for zoning, but for trustees.
Trustees, right.
For zoning, you suggested two, though, what, what would that look like? Would somebody go and give a presentation, or is it just like, here it is, you have any questions? Or how does that look?
Any way you want. It, it can be, I can come in and do a similar style presentation, uh, answer any questions people may have. We can then, at the same time, also have the document online with a Google form or a Microsoft form, that people could input their comment with a page number. Um, we could have a hard, a hard copy here, if someone wants to walk in and look at it, and supply a, a written form. You know, I don't want to go all digital, um, I don't want to go all paper either, so we could do different forms of public comment that way as well, in concurrence with your work, uh, as a public hearing, and, and the trustees as a public hearing, too. Happy to do as you desire. I can tell you, uh, Hebrin did the digital comment. They, they just went and said, if anybody wants it, go click this link and fill out this, I think, fifty comments, I think, so. St. Albans Township didn't, they kind of held a public hearing, like, judiciously, like, public hearing's now open, anybody have a comment? State your piece. Everyone stated their piece, and they closed it. I think they may have held one after that, same thing, open, comment, shut, moved it on to the trustees. So, I can help, however you see fit.
I like having options for people to send their comments online, as well as in-person in a public hearing. I'm not sure how that would look like for people that wanted a hard copy or to write. I don't know how that, how they would.
Uh, I would suggest probably because this is a pretty hefty copy to hand out to a lot of people.
It's about a hundred and ten dollars, I think.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
We have told them these before.
Um, so, having a PDF version probably would be the most cost-effective way to do it, with a link to maybe on the website or something as, well, I don't know if we could do that. But maybe we could send them, like, if someone said, I want to see it, maybe we could send, because PDF cannot be altered. So, sending it like that may be an option.
Well, um, so, during the process, I kept a project page, uh, agendas, so what I, I can manage that, and then just give Laura the, or whoever, the link.
Yeah.
And then it'll, it'll direct someone to my website.
Okay.
For the project.
And I, that's probably, if you, if you want to manage it, but I mean.
It's, it's already set up, it's another two, three links.
Okay, Jim, Jim, is this gonna cost anymore? Because I think we crossed the line of their authority versus the trustees' authority. I'm wondering if the board of trustees at their next meeting.
I'm wondering if the board of trustees at their next meeting should determine how they want the process, but that's just my thought, I mean, you've got one trustee sitting.
Does it cross, I don't think it crosses.
If you're doing anything where it's going to have to cost us to pay you to make copies and stuff, I don't think this board has the authority to try and make.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't think they're, I don't think they're asking that.
I just want, you're kind of going at a bunch of different options, anything that's for free I can do on the website, I don't have a problem doing, but.
Yeah.
I don't know that, I mean, you're, you're throwing out several different options to do a public, how they want to proceed in the process of adopting a comp and is this really the right order to have to see?
I would say, I've gone this far and so if, if there's one more meeting, then I got to do a presentation, I have the information, I have, I have it, I'm going to have to be here anyway. It's not going to cost anything else. If, if you wanted to, if you wanted to mail out four hundred copies to someone, then we got to talk, but at this point.
I, I just want, I didn't want to, I just, I didn't want to overstep my bounds, but you came with only five copies for this board, if they cost you a hundred dollars a copy and I just didn't want us to get too far and then make a decision to the board that we really aren't, it's not our authority to make.
No, I'm, I'm okay. We, I, they, they won't get another copy, I can say that, the trustees will get a copy.
I feel we could work for this.
Yeah.
If needed, updated, it could be sent PDF, that's the way I feel about it.
Yeah, you'll.
Will a lot of us work off of that or can access that?
Yeah, the, the PDF would be available. Yeah, the trustees will get one office copy if someone's going to come in, that's it, I'm okay with that.
Because right now I only have one zoning office copy between me and John, we have one copy.
Yeah, so once we, if this board decides to hold a public hearing, however it's decided, whether that's trustee down or telling them to or they decide to, that I'm here to help. So I haven't heard anything that makes me think this is going to cost any more money.
So I guess that's my question, what is the pleasure of the board, what do you feel we should do? Should we wait for the trustees to make that call for us to do that or should we go ahead? I looked at the calendar, our next meeting is on December twelfth and then we don't have another meeting until January ninth because of all the holidays that fall on Mondays and Tuesdays this year. So what do y'all want to do?
Before we get too far, let me see what, it's December twelfth or something. I cannot do December twelfth.
So it would have to be January ninth, we'd be the earliest for you, right?
But I think that's okay, you can hear me out, I think if I work over the next week to set up all this stuff, to get on the website, to get Laura the.
It would take some time to set that up anyways, right? So.
It gives us time to clarify.
Right.
What is our role in deciding how you want to proceed?
And talking to Dave.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm talking to Dave.
Yes, I think that's a good idea, what do you all think?
I think people would want to come in.
Yeah.
Right.
We will probably not have anybody here.
January ninth, that date works for you, January ninth. Yeah, because I was looking and I'm going, there's all these holidays at these times, there's nobody going to be here. Sound good, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Maybe that January also gives us some guidance from the trustee board, how they would want to proceed to with us in this hearing.
Um, I'm going to kind of just throw this out there, your next meeting is on the fourth, right?
The fifth.
I don't know, let me look at the calendar.
I believe it's the first week of.
The first week.
The fifth and the nineteenth.
Fifth and the nineteenth, okay. Okay, the fifth, I'm, I'm a day behind. I have an appointment at six and I know you all start at six, right? Do you think it's going to be a long meeting?
I am not privy to the agenda until the day before, so I couldn't tell you.
Because what I thought about is being as chair, maybe I can ensure that the meeting and ask them a question, would that be, do you think acceptable, do you guys think I should show up or one of us as a representative?
If you want on the agenda, you need to contact trustee or officer.
I mean, just to ask a question.
If you want on the agenda.
I encourage it.
Contact, I'm not, I think it would be a great idea too, but we can't speak for.
That's fine, but I was asking more for advice.
Yes, I, yes.
To, to see because I could be there around six-thirty, I believe, so maybe she can just push me back to the, I will talk to her and see about being put on the agenda to discuss this. That okay with everyone? Or does anyone want to jump up to the podium? I know.
You made the big mic, right?
Right.
So we'll, we'll have a tentative date of January ninth.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Unless you hear otherwise on the.
Unless we hear otherwise, but that gives you time, that gives us time, that gives them time for all, and for you to talk to Dave because he's probably the most diligent on the board, given that with all his experience, we appreciate him immensely. I hope you know that, Dave.
Absolutely.
So he's the one. Is there any other discussions about this before we move on?
Can I ask a question? Just about the presentation, are you able, like when you do it on the ninth, are you able to do it like on a PowerPoint as well? So that way, like I was looking at the maps, but again.
Yeah.
And I have a very good vision, but I'm like.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, what, what I could probably also do is maybe create a couple, I can order a couple of boards with maybe the future land use map on it. That's probably the one most people are going to be curious about, so yes, yes to PowerPoint and probably do a couple of boards.
Yeah, I would suggest because, I mean, if people want to read it for themselves, if I was going to do this, I would point out the major changes to the comprehensive plan and mostly that would be plan use is what I'm thinking, right?
The form-based code?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The base code. That was my lady, sir. But, yeah. All right. So thank you very much for coming, we do appreciate you and all the work that you all put into this.
It's been fun, except when Gary bounced off, but doesn't happen too much.
Well, I mean, you all got something in paper, so y'all agree and that's always good.
Hey, I always, in my municipal career, whenever I could get four people to vote yes, that was all I needed and I was really excited when all eleven committee members at the time were in approval of it, so. Even when I set the stage at the beginning, said I'm going to piss off everybody at least a little bit, I did a good job.
Everybody doesn't see eye to eye, but at least you got something done and, you know, came together, everybody saw each other's, you know, opinions and you got something.
I agree.
It was a collaboration because not, we didn't each get, get everything our way.
I appreciate it.
And we had to consider, and we, the committee did a great job considering the rest of the township and all of the demographics and really, they really did.
I agree. It's been fun, still got a ways to go.
Understood. Thank you so much and.
Thanks.
I'll get your information from Laura and I'll give you a call. Appreciate it.
So we'll, probably by the, our next meeting, I'd like you all to know what the trustee said, unless we shoot an email out in, which I know you'll help me with, about what Plan A is going to be for the January meeting. Now, is there any public comments? Go ahead, podium's yours.
Gary Burkhole, two-five-four Trail East. I want to thank the commission because I was impressed by the detail of your questions and responses and Mr. Olson, I, one of the things I've talked about too, and I know Jim's been working on it, is getting a current updated zoning map, I think would be helpful not only for this committee, but obviously for the community or any developers coming in. I do have some comments which I'll probably reserve regarding, there were a few things on the maps that we all talked about that we changed on the future land use map, there were some we talked about that didn't get changed, so I'll probably reserve those for any public comments that you may have either at this commission or at the board of trustees. And I am supportive of having more public input, if we can have some hearings and everything, I think that would be appreciated by the community. You may have a lot, but you may not have that many, but at least they'd have an opportunity to take a look at it. So I'm very encouraged by the process here tonight that we're moving forward, but also considering other possibilities for input from the public. So again, thanks for going through this in detail and having comments back for Jim, thank you.
Anyone else? Don't everybody stand up and talk? Okay. Does any of the board have anything else?
I don't.
Okay.
No.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I think she voted for a German.
I wasn't going to make that call, they got the.
I still go for a German.
All right, is there a second?
A second, that.
And is all in favor?
All right.
All right, so it's turned at seven oh one.